PM exactly, so we'll get the meeting started. Rob, are you recording?
Just hit the button.
Okay. So this is the Enfield Planning Board. It is September 14, 2022. We are meeting in the Enfield DPW conference room. And also, there are several guests joining us on Microsoft Teams. Members of the board who are present from my left, starting with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Dan Kylie.
David Frack.
Bill Ramirez.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
And Kate hasn't joined us yet.
She's alternate members.
Uh, let's introduce our staff people. Rob Taylor. Whitney Banker. Uh, and Whitney and Jim, who's on the camera, are our alternates. We may call water both of them into service a little bit later. So first, uh, first we have public comments. So if there is anyone who has anything that is not part of the agenda, that they would like to talk to the planning board, now is your chance to speak. Anybody with anything not on the agenda? Okay. Uh, next is our select board report. Is Kate there?
Yes.
All right. I hear an echo. Can you fix that, Rob?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Kate?
Hi.
Hi. Um, can you give the select board report?
Uh, the select board report is, I was at a funeral and not a, not the select board meeting. So very little to report, um, other than you can, we'll be able to find the drop minutes online and see the video. And I do want to let everybody know the upcoming select board meeting next Monday on the 19th has four scheduled public hearings and a number of other topics of interest. So anybody who's interested in, uh, joining in, we welcome you to come up. Any questions?
Okay. Thanks, Kate. Uh, next we'll get into the hearings. First, we have a continuation of P220701. Conkey Enterprises LLC of Canaan, New Hampshire, has applied for a gravel pit permit to reopen a gravel pit located on Bog Road, formerly operated by Green Links Construction Company of London, New Hampshire. The parcel in question is in the R5 Residential Agricultural Zoning District and is 95 acres. It's also identified as tax map one lot 10. So I imagine most, if not all, of the people in the audience and, uh, also both people appearing virtually are here because of the Conkey hearing. I'd like to kind of summarize, uh, a little bit of what we accomplished last month when we met. And, uh, perhaps explaining some nuances of the regulation process. And also, um, respond to a letter that I received, I think it was yesterday, possibly the day before, from an attorney by the name of Amy Manzelli and Tom Hannah. Hi, Tom, thank you for identifying yourself. Um, and hopefully I'll be able to, um, make some responses to your letter and, uh, we'll get on to it. Uh, after that, I will let the board make some comments on what I said, Rob.
Let's just ask, port of order, Mr. Chairman, should you ask all the people that are online to mute themselves voluntarily? So that I don't have to do it, because if I do, sometimes they will, can't let them back in, so.
Okay. Um, I hope everybody heard Rob's request to mute yourselves. So I see, I think I see everybody. Thank you, Tom. Except Christine Convoy. Christine, can you mute yourself?
I don't know how they do that. Oh, here it is.
Okay, thank you, Christine. And everybody else seems to have muted themselves as well. So a gravel pit permit, which is what we are talking about, actually has three distinct regulatory tracks. Track one is a zoning track. That's governed by the town zoning ordinance. And just to kind of summarize, this pit is in the R5 district, which is known as residential slash agricultural. And as such, our zoning ordinance says that a gravel pit is allowed by special exception. Special exception must be granted by, or can be granted by the zoning board of adjustment. The applicant would have to make, you know, apply to the ZBA, go to a hearing, state why he needs a special exception or wants a special exception for the gravel pit. And then the ZBA would make a decision. The second track, which is where we are now, is called the excavation permit. Excavation permit is something that is done by the town, uh, under general directions of RSA 1, I think it's 155E. And there are essentially two types of permits and standards under this RSA. One is called the express standards. And the express standards, both operational and reclamation, are for operations that have been grandfathered. The minimum standards, and this is confusing, are for new operations or for gravel pit operations that have let their, um, their permits, previously obtained permits expire. And one of the criteria for expiration, um, is not taking a commercially viable amount of gravel or material out of the ground for a period, any period of two consecutive years. The third track is a track that's administered by the state. And that's the alteration of terrain permit. Generally speaking, an applicant will get his zoning ducks in order first, get his town excavation permit second. And then once those two are nailed down, then the applicant will go to the state and apply for the alteration of terrain permit. So we have three tracks. Uh, the town is concerned with two of them. And the zoning track and the permit, the excavation permit track, have different definitions of what constitutes abandonment. And they're, they're just totally separate. Our zoning administrator, Rob Taylor, has determined that from a zoning perspective, the applicant, Mr. Conkey, now owns the pit. This is not an abandoned use from the point of view of zoning. He made that determination a long time ago when he first warned the meeting. That determination was reinforced at our meeting in July. And it was reaffirmed by the board, this group here, at our meeting in August. So from, from our point of view, from the zoning point of view, the applicant remains grandfathered. And I know that the, the letter from, um, Mr. Ha, Mr. Hannah from Tom, uh, disagrees with that. And he certainly makes, you know, some points. It cites our zoning ordinance, which, uh, basically says that a use is abandoned for one year and not resumed, it's, it loses its grandfathering status. And on the surface, that's correct. Um, on the other hand, we don't know that it wasn't. We, we don't know that that is, that abandonment was actually the intent. Um, we know that there were, was not a, um, like a, the, the required paperwork filed for a period of probably six years. But that does not indicate, from a zoning perspective, that the, um, that the pit was abandoned. And there are lots of arguments that we could put forth. But the, the salient point here is that the zoning administrator made his determination a long time ago. It was reaffirmed over a month ago. And there's an appeal period of 30 days. And here we are at day, I think it's 35. So nobody has appealed the administrator's decision. So I think we have to stick with it, that, that vote has left the dock. And we're going to continue thinking that this is a grandfathered operation from a zoning perspective. Um, there's certainly the possibility that the outcome of this hearing can be appealed, which basically is a request for a rehearing. And that would be inappropriate time to challenge Rob's decision on the zoning statute or the zoning status. Um, you know, personally, I don't know how the ZBA would, would view the, the question of grandfathered status, whether they would grant special exception or not. But my, my gut tells me, because the pit has been there for a long time and there have not been a lot of questions or objections to it, uh, my gut tells me that they would probably grant a special exception. So getting back to the, um, gravel pit side of it, because of the lapse in filing paperwork, the grandfathered status is lost. And what that means is we treat this, and we are treating this as a new application, it is subject to the higher standards. And that's the way we tried to frame the discussion at our last meeting. Um, so let me, let me try to just go through the letter, um.
Eric, does anyone need a copy?
Um, of your letter?
Yes.
Uh, I think we can put that up on the screen, Rob.
We've got copies too.
You've got copies?
Yeah.
Asma?
Sure.
I'll pass them here.
Board has them.
Yep. Yeah, I need some more. Got it on my, got it on my phone.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so going, going through your letter, um, on Roman numeral three, which is the proposed gravel pit would be a development of regional impact. Um, we had not considered the possibility that this gravel pit, which has been around for quite some time, is a development of regional impact. Um, the, but again, that's a zoning issue. And as of yet, the board has not made a determination. A development of regional impact, according to the state, um, uh, number five, proximity to aquifers or surface watered, which transcend municipal boundaries. And I, I think that's what you're kind of hanging your hat on. Is that correct?
Primarily, but also the traffic spans borders.
Traffic? Okay. Um.
Trucks.
Trucks.
Not, not.
Okay.
Passenger cars.
Uh, we, we did have a, a rather extensive discussion on how many truckloads per day or per week or per month. And the, the figure was incredibly low. Um, although Mr. Schneider did ask for information on how much gravel would be taken out in future years. And even if we go back to the amount of gravel that was taken out under the previous owner, when he was actively working the pit, um, you're still not talking about a whole lot of.
I thought you were asking if there's anything else that should be considered. It's clearly the aquifer is the primary driving force, but I didn't mean to mislead you on that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that, that's what I thought you're, you, you were hanging your hat on. But I, I'm glad you brought up the traffic, just so we can agree that that is basically not a major issue at this point. Um.
David, can I just have a quick, um, point of information? Who was speaking? Cause we can't tell if you're on Zoom necessarily, who's talking unless they announce their name each time.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kate. So.
I have additional.
Just, just a sec. Uh, what the heck is coming up here? Um, so the person who spoke last was Tom Hannah. And he is an attorney representing several of the abutters. Okay? And I'll ask people to identify themselves, uh, before they start talking, just so the people who are on Zoom know who you are. Jim, your point?
Oh, yes. Um, I'm thinking that we probably should afford Mr. Conkey an opportunity to, if he's getting any new information or wants to make a comment before we get involved. Or if we're talking about a specific element, perhaps give him an opportunity to, to at least first respond.
Well, I will certainly do that. Uh, there are several points that I would like to cover. And then, as I said, we'll open it up to the board. And then Mr. Conkey and anyone else can talk about it. Um, so as I said, we're, we're talking about, um, development of regional impact. And that is a zoning issue. The board can talk about that tonight. And we can decide if we consider this to be a development of regional impact or not. If we decide that it is, then we would probably stop the hearing. And we would have to notify the abutting towns and the regional planning commission. Um, all of whom would then gain party status. They would receive copies of everything. And they would be allowed to give testimony before the board. Um, if we decide that it's not, 30-day clock starts and an appeal can be lodged with the zoning board. So, um, that is, that is about it. I hope that I, perhaps somewhat rambling preamble here has clarified and not muddied the waters. It, it is a little complex, the three different tracks, two of which we're on or we're responsible for. Um, any questions or comments from board members about what I have said?
I have one question. That is, has Enfield's legal counsel reviewed this?
I believe he has.
Uh, what was, what was his opinion?
Rob, you had the conversations with the town council.
Town Council, Michael Portman, Upton and Hatfield. Uh, we discussed the question of the grandfathering at length. Um, he thinks we're on pretty solid footing there with that. The question of the, uh, regional impact, he wants us to have that conversation tonight. And this is advice that you guys consider that. And at least can, uh, make your determination if you feel. And I passed around, hopefully y'all got, uh, we've got a document prepared by the state office of, uh, strategic initiatives, now the office of planning at the, uh, Business and Economic Affairs Department. Uh, that gives you guys, it's primary sort of information about it. But basically, you read those six points there. It's your, it's your call whether it's a, a development of regional impact, this project, to rise to that level. As David said, if you feel it is, then we start the notification process for a future meeting, probably 30 days out, to involve the town of Grantham, perhaps Springfield, they're very close by as well, and the, uh, RDC, the Regional Planning Commission. And they will all sort of be granted, almost like an abutter status, as David said, to be involved in this conversation with us, come in, be involved in the process.
That answer your question or answer my question?
I only see one, one item here, that's a worst, unless they're not.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I would agree.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's.
Believe that you've got one, you've got two, perhaps slightly less weighted, uh, number two and number four. About 70 of the boards, it certainly can't get any closer. Four, uh, there is a noise issue that the abutters have asked us to address, since we live in a different town.
But the aquifer certainly is.
Yeah.
Most likely.
By far and away, the aquifer is the most.
Yeah. And, and, uh, you know, I, I think the aquifer is a legitimate concern.
Yeah.
The abutters. Um, they have alleged or stated by, what was the, what was the phrase that you used? By, by knowledge and belief?
The, uh, standard is, uh, any proposal before a local land use award. So it is a planning board decision, not just zoning. This is Tom Hannah again, for the record.
Right.
Um, so, you know, any proposal before a local land use award, which in the determination of such local land, land use award, could reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality. That's.
Right.
I think that's what you're asking.
And, and, and you have said, uh, in your letter that the aquifer supplies, what, a thousand homes in the Eastman Division? Community, give or take?
That's, that's.
And, you know, there, there's a potential.
Close to 1,400, but.
They show where that well is, the wells are.
Excuse me?
If they show where them wells are to answer that.
I, I suppose they could. Are, are all your houses on individual wells? Or do you have a, a community system?
Yeah.
You do. And can you show where the well is on, on a map?
It's not our application, Mr. Chairman.
Point, point taken.
But.
Point taken.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, the aquifer is the big elephant in the room, uh, which we know very little. We don't know, excuse me, Mr. Conkey, just a second. We have a map that was presented to us a month ago, which is from USGS, US Geological Survey, that locates an aquifer somewhere in the vicinity of where the pit is. But, you know, without an actual overlay, I can't say for certain, and I don't think you can say for certain, that the aquifer is directly under the pit. So that's, that's a big unknown. Um.
Chairman, question?
Yes.
Is that not the function of the state track? Terms of what they would be doing to identify whether or not, uh, the aquifer affected?
Uh, thank you for asking that, Brad. Uh, yesterday, I, I decided to find out the answer to that question. And I reached out to, to find the gentleman's name. Uh, he, he's basically the program leader for, uh, the alteration of terrain program. I, I'm sorry, I don't have his name right now, but I can get it for you. And his answer was, we really deal with stormwater runoff. And we don't have a whole lot of expertise or, for, you know, groundwater aquifers are not what we're really concerned. That kind of came as a little bit of a surprise to me. And he, he volunteered to speak with a colleague of his in the drinking water division. And, uh, he emailed me back with the name of the contact and a brief summary of his discussion. And what he, what he learned was that the drinking water program also has no program that deals with protection of aquifers. So to answer your question, no, the state is not going to look into that. And I'm surprised.
So it strikes me that obviously we need an, an independent expert, AKA the state, we thought, to look at this and determine whether or not the aquifer is affected.
Yes.
Right?
We, we.
Otherwise, we are just talking about, we thinks.
Exactly.
And that's. And that's not going to get us anywhere.
Exactly. We cannot base our decision on something that potentially would affect eleven hundred, fourteen hundred households on speculation. Go ahead.
I was gonna point out. Barry Cunningham.
Thanks, Barry.
The statute that talks about this issue of like, hey, look out for these things, aquifers is a big one in the statute. So when I talked to the state AOT guy, I think his name was Bob Farman, he's overseas to everybody in the AOT. He said that the aquifer was something that they were gonna look at once the permit was filed with them for AOT. So that's odd that you had that conversation, especially with the statute says, hey, the thing you gotta look for is the aquifer.
That's why I was surprised. And now I have the, the name of the gentleman that I spoke with. And it's Ridgely Mauk, M-A-U-K. And I will read verbatim what he wrote. He said, David, I spoke with Pierce Rigrod of NHDES Drinking Water and Groundwater Bureau, Source Water Protection Section regarding the proposed excavation in Enfield that we discussed earlier today. Ridgely, yeah, Ridgely and I discussed. Pierce indicated there are no rules in the DWGB, which is the Groundwater Drinking Water and Groundwater Bureau, that would prohibit such a project, nor would there be any permitting requirements from DWGB. Do you have any further questions? Suggest you contact Pierce Rigrod directly. So.
What I just, is Mr. Mauk.
Mr. Mauk is with the the AOT, the Alteration of Terrain, which deals with stormwater.
Point of information, what RSA were they referencing?
Kate, again, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Sure. As a point of information, could I get the RSA number that was referenced? I don't know if the gentleman said it.
One fifty-five E, Part Six.
Can you say it one more time?
One fifty-five E, Part Six.
Can I, can I bring back something? Bring it back to where we should be, please? Sure. Which is, we've got to decide if it's a development of regional impact before we can decide on anything else.
That is true.
And can I also say that I believe it is because we have a butters here from Springfield, Grantham, not only just from Enfield. So by what you have in the regulation, it does, this does affect other municipalities because we've said they are butters.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board want to weigh in on that?
I would agree.
Yeah.
Phil?
I agree.
Tim?
Tim will agree.
Well done. Kate, would you agree this is a regional impact situation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. The board agrees that this is a regional impact. Mr. Conkey, would you like to respond?
I have a question. Is the reason why we want to do a poll is just because the lot is ninety-five acres?
No.
If the lot was fifteen acres?
It has nothing to do with the size.
Okay, because then if the lot was fifteen acres, there would not be no more butters into that thing.
Well, that's, that's a good way, that's a good way of looking at it. However, we're dealing with what we have in front of us, which is a ninety-five or ninety-seven acre parcel. So here we are. It is a development that has regional impact and we have to notify more abutters.
And the Regional Planning Commission.
And the Regional Planning Commission.
So does that mean we, we talk about this again in thirty days, right?
It does.
It comes up again in thirty days. And in between, perhaps we could speak to the gentleman that Barry referenced at the state that he talked to and see if we get a different answer from what you've done.
That would certainly be.
It's possible that maybe you're in the wrong department, right? Left hand doesn't know the right hand's doing, which is very common for the state.
Look, left hand never knows what the right hand does.
And between now and then, we can do some research.
I think so.
I would like to see a map of the wells falling in relationship to the aquifer, where they are, what their location is.
I'd like to see the state take that on. But I'd like to see. We're not, we're not experts, right? We're not geological experts, supposedly the state is because it's in the documentation that they have.
What I think is going to happen with this thing, if, if indeed the aquifer is an item that the state is going to be looking at, they consider their alteration of terrain permit or any other permits involved with the project, they're going to ask for an application. That application has got to address all that stuff. An engineer will have to be hired by Mr. Conkey to prepare the application. They'll, the state will review it. If they see anything that's missing or wrong, they'll send it back and request more information. That process will take. So if they're going to look at the aquifer, that's when they do it. They say either you gotta do some test borings or what have you. And it's not like we're going to ask the state to spend money and come up here and do a study. I don't think that's going to happen.
Question? Is it possible that the Eastman development has some engineering drawings and maps they could share?
Of what?
Where your wells are.
Is it possible?
There's a distinction between Eastman Community Association and the Village District of Eastman, which operates the water source. Those are completely two different organizations. Yeah. So we could certainly talk to Village District and, you know, share with planning board where their wells are.
The wells are geolocated on state maps anyway, so the AOT permit's gonna have all, already there.
I just thought we might be able to save everyone some steps here.
Well, the problem is that you can't backward flowing, which direction does it flow? It's in flow away from the wells or towards it? We don't know. No way. No information whatsoever. Or what the impact of, you have to stretch your imagination here. Maybe a couple of drums, PCB somehow carried down to the gravel pit. I don't know. And how would that contamination move and so forth? But I don't see that as something we're going to be able to determine just by looking at a few maps. No, there's an aquifer under there that's from the USGS. Yes, it could be impacted somehow, but it's gonna take an expert far more accomplished than us.
So I, I think that's, that's an accurate assessment, Tim. You know, we're gonna have to get an expert, an engineer or somebody who is qualified, who can look at the situation. Maybe he does some test borings, maybe he measures the flow. I don't know what they do. But, you know, we need an answer to the question of will a gravel pit impact the aquifer? And will it affect the wells for the Eastman community? And if it does, what mitigation measures can be taken by Mr. Conkey to eliminate or at least minimize the possibility of an impact on the community water source?
I want to be careful, David, with the we, because we as a town don't need to do any of that. We need to be careful and we need to make good decisions, but that job and that task needs to be assigned to one of the parties in front of us.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I, I was not suggesting that the town undertake this. I was suggesting that we need, we, the planning board, needs the answers to the questions which I had stated in order to make an informed decision. So what we're moving towards is getting the applicant, Mr. Conkey, and perhaps the butters would want to agree on a mutually acceptable consultant to perform this work. And perhaps even share in the cost of it since it's to everybody's benefit.
I don't think we can do that. I think we, this needs to go back to this, the state, just because the state advocates their role. The state regularly advocates their role and pushes costs down on towns and other folks. If the butters feel so strongly, then they should be working directly with the states. I'm not saying they're wrong, but they should be pushing the state to perform the role that our tax sellers go for.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
I agree with Kate. It's up to DES to ask the questions. If they're, if they're not going to ask the question, then it would then be up to somebody here to push the DES to ask the question. It is their division. It is their RSA. Under the RSA, it is up to them to decide what the aquifer is and who it affects. Now, they could run around and say, we don't do that, but the RSA says you do. So it's up to you as an agency to put the RSA into effect and say, yes, you do do this.
And you're suggesting that. Yes. Sure.
Yeah. My name is Dr. Tyce. I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission. My back is bad. I can't stand up for a while. The Conservation Commission had two issues regarding this gravel pit. One was the wetland, which we requested Mr. Conkey, permission to come on this land and measure. Don't shake your head, Dan, because it's all his man.
I agree.
Let me finish.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
And he refused. The wetland, it has to be of a certain size to be considered important. We don't have any measures of that. The second thing was the aquifer. The aquifer is on the US Geological Survey map that I brought here the first time this meeting took place. Since then, I have looked into companies that operate LiDAR systems. LiDAR systems are capable of measuring the width, depth, and length of aquifers underground. And I know that there is one close here by that does this service. Secondly, or thirdly, the Conservation Commission has sent a letter to both the Wetland Bureau and the DES and the operation of terrain people outlining our concerns and asking them to investigate this particular permit. When it is filed, I called the Wetland Bureau this morning and he said that Mr. Conkey has not filed a permit to the DES for this gravel mining operation. So basically, I have started the Conservation Commission, I started a group to investigate possible method of mapping that out.
That's excellent. And I think we thank you for that effort. But your caveat is that they really aren't going to take any action until the permit is filed.
They have no reason to.
Exactly.
So that's, that's Mr. Conkey's responsibility now to file the permit.
And as I stated previously, the usual way that these permits are obtained is you nail down your zoning issues first. You nail down your town excavation permit second. And then you go to the state, which I think that permit is what, twelve hundred dollars, Mr. Conkey? Do you recall? It, it, it's not an inexpensive investment. So, you know, you want to make sure that you get your other two permits before you plug down a thousand or two thousand. In this instance, we may have to deviate from it.
Well, the sequence of events is not what I was talking.
I, I know. But what I'm trying to say is that Mr. Conkey appears to be trying to follow the normal sequence of obtaining permits, which is you get the state permit last. And in this instance, that's not going to work. Because we need information from the state permit before we can make a decision.
Yeah. I would suggest, except if on the permit that we like grant, the condition of approval is that the state permits are obtained.
That, that's a matter of course, right?
That, that's a matter of course. In this instance, there are just so many unknowns that I would not feel comfortable granting a town permit, even if, even if the state, you know, if we condition it on state approval, because there might be some things that the state would suggest as mitigating factors that would be a town, a thing that the town would regulate. And if we don't put it in the permit, it's not there. I don't know.
Well, but is it accurate to state that we can't make a decision tonight anyways because we determined that it's regional?
We have.
So what are we doing?
We're kicking the can.
Right. You want, you want me to make a motion?
Would you like to?
I'd make a motion.
You can end this.
That the Conkey Enterprise LLC application be considered a development of regional impact?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Phil seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Tensions? Okay, this is a regional development of regional impact. We will have to notice the recount of Springfield, Grantham, regional planning and invite them all to come here a month from now.
I would also suggest that the Chair go file, Village District, they're considered a municipality.
Okay, okay. That's fair.
David, it's October twelfth.
Is that Columbus Day?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Columbus Day is on a Monday now.
Okay. Three day weekends.
For New Hampshire, it's Indigenous.
Because Indigenous Americans, Dave.
Like old dude gets the last day.
I'm just showing my. Okay, before we move on to something else, and.
Well, we need to get, we need to get approval from Mr. Conkey to have an extension to the ninety day clock.
Yes, we do. Mr. Conkey?
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Just a second. You approve?
Yes.
Okay. Rob, I'd like you to prepare a memo that Mr. Conkey can sign and we can put in the file that says that he waives his right to a decision within ninety days.
Tell us when it's.
Okay. Yes.
My name is Tom Hannah, and I just wanted to respond to the request that Mr. Conkey waived the ninety day rule. This, the fact that this is a, you've decided this is a matter of regional impact, that means that certain butters have not been notified. So the hearing essentially starts fresh. And I consider what's happened so far not to have been, I mean, obviously it's going to help you in being well versed in, in this matter. But you have had hearings where butters have not been appropriately notified because the regional impact statute says that certain people shall be treated as butters, certain entities, municipalities and the regional commission. So I'm not sure you need his, you know, Mr. Conkey's permission for the ninety day extension. So I'm not sure you need his, you know, Mr. Conkey's permission for the 90-day extension because you're really starting over from a technical hearing point of view.
Right, except that the, except the 90 days, the statute, I believe, begins when the application has been accepted. And we have accepted an application.
But you had failed to notify the abutters, which happens frequently. Then that essentially nullifies what has happened previously. And that's my point.
Okay.
My second point is I studied that August 10 set of minutes, and it doesn't seem to me that there has been a formal ruling by this board or by Rob uh, having to do with abandonment. Uh, that seems to be a threshold issue still. If the pit has been abandoned, then this board should not go forward without the zoning board having granted a special exception. That's the way, I know you said track one, track two, track three, and I think you sort of glossed over the fact that it's gone out of order, but it really shouldn't have gone out of order. The first step should have been and still could be Mr. Conkey gets a special exception from the zoning board. If he does that, he moves on to the planning board for his excavation permit. If he gets that, he moves on to the AOT permit.
My, my response is that the zoning administrator, Rob, made his decision a long time ago.
Where is it? Where is that decision?
I, I think de facto that he did not tell Mr. Conkey that he needed a special exception from the zoning board. And the fact, you know, we can go back to our last meeting in, uh, in August, when he stated that this was his decision. And the board said, yes, we agree with you that that was a proper decision. So I, I, I think his decision has been made and you can't, you can't prove a negative. In other words, if he, if he had said, i- i- if his decision was the other way and said you needed to go to the zoning board, he would have told that to Mr. Conkey when he filed the application. He did not do so, and you know, it, 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 it just defies logic that if, if he made a decision that did not involve Mr. Conkey taking a certain action, that there would be need to make that, uh, to make anything, you know, written on that.
Well, I, I wrote down what you said earlier in your summary, and you said because of the lapse of paperwork, abandonment has occurred on this pit, and therefore you're proceeding as if this were a new pit. Uh, or a pit that had, uh, with an expired, with an expired permit.
And, and I, I said that from the excavation permit track, not from the zoning permit track. If, 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 if I misspoke or you did not understand, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with her. I'm just saying if there was abandonment, then special exception is needed from the zoning board.
But you, you, you're, again, you're conflating the zoning track and the excavation permit track. And, and the two have different definitions of abandonment. Would you grant that?
They have two different standards. That's right. One is two years, any period of two years, and your zoning ordinance is any period of one year of lack of use. And once, once, from our perspective, once abandonment is determined based on either the state statute, 155E, or your zoning ordinance, then the use is abandoned, and therefore you start from scratch. Starting from scratch means special exception from the zoning board.
Or Bivers? Do you feel we should start from scratch? Or, just a second, Mr. Conkey, I'm asking my colleagues on the board.
Well, is, is there any more information about what transpired over the past six years with the pit? Do we know anything that we didn't know last week, last meeting?
Well, I, I think that last meeting, Rob described about, um, the change of use, uh, laws and the abandonment and all of that. And it was pretty clear to everybody at this table and our town council that we are on solid footing. I, I think that the decision has been made and we need to move forward.
I agree. Yep, I agree.
Don't disagree.
Kate, do you have an opinion, would you like to express? No.
I just think it would be helpful in light of all the people and all the people that are online that, that in light of the fact that your own ordinance says one year and it's been six. And we, we talk about how Rob's made a decision. And that's kind of it. But I don't remember, like, I would love to, like, oh, Rob, Rob, maybe to say, oh, Barry, this, this, and this specifically, that, that categorizes it as grandfathered and not what this, what, what our ordinances say or what the statute says. It's these three things. That we haven't heard. I think everyone's, everyone here and everyone online and everyone in Eastman is going. Every, you know, I've talked to a half dozen people, three of them lawyers, and they're all looking at the same statutes going, how was this, how was this grandfathered? Everybody's wondering what, what exactly undergirds that decision? And that's kind of what, that's the kind of thing that we're struggling with, you know, I mean this with all respect to the board.
I'd like to add something, I guess. Um, I don't want to be grouped with the people online or in the everybody. I think it's inappropriate to make things beyond I statements without having the parties speak for themselves. And so certainly as a member of the board, I don't have that point of confusion, and I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Rob, do you want to tell us again?
To give a little bit of a refresher on, uh, where I came from on this and discussions that we had with town council. And I can even cite a few examples of other situations in the town of Enfield that we've run into very similarly. This pit was owned and operated by Mr. Hastings. David Hastings was his name. His company was called Green Links Construction, and he operated the pit for many years. If I maybe talk to some of you, that the pit, the history of the pit goes way back to the construction of Interstate 89, also the construction of Eastman. A lot of the material underneath your roads and in your, your home sites came from this pit. We can see in historic imagery that the pit was in existence way long time ago. And it actually had internal roads into Eastman, not going out onto town road, but going straight in. So anyways, Mr. Mr. Hastings came sick. Uh, I'm, I'm not totally clear on the history on his health conditions and so forth. But let's just say he died prematurely. He was operating the pit and he died. And the pit basically hit the pause button. There was no action taken by Mr. Hastings or his heirs or signs to do anything with that pit. There was literally dump trucks parked there. There's piles of material. There's excavation holes in the ground and other detritus around the site. Uh, and it sat basically idle by his death, his premature death. Now, during that period, the estate of his, uh, uh, creation, of the time of his death, was trying to settle on his matters and his affairs. And, uh, I think it was a long time. I don't think he had done a really good job with the state planning. So it went into, I think, the state of probate, and, uh, it was offered for sale about three years ago. Uh, and we made some calls, started finding people that wanted to take it over. Uh, but again, because it just sat there. And, uh, our experience and our knowledge of the abandonment suggests that intentional act needs to happen to actually abandon something. The sighting, and I believe it's Lawler, uh, the Supreme Court case was a mobile home was on the site. It was grandfathered, was not allowed, uh, used in that zone. Uh, and after a certain number of years, they pulled the, the mobile home off the site. Later on, somebody tried to say, can I, I want to put mobile home back on the site. And the town said, nope, can't do it. Because intentional act of removing the mobile home from the site was the abandonment. And we have cases here in town, and one of the ones I cited to our town attorney was the, uh, footprint grandfathering. We have, uh, lakefront homes in this town that go way back. And it's a big deal because we don't let you build within 50 feet of the water today. But a lot of our homes on the lakes were built before we had those rules, and they are grandfathered. And so that footprint exists because, uh, you have grandfathering rights to that. Now, we say, if you remove the house and you plant it to grass, then the one-year thing that's in our ordinance kicks in for the grandfather. You don't have 12 months to reuse that grandfathered footprint of a home site. And if you come in, in two years, say, I want to build a house back where that house was, we say, sorry. Can't let you do that because intentionally abandoned. There's an overt act that would suggest that you said, I'm done here. Not using my grandfathering rights. In this case, with Mr. Hastings', his premature death, there was no overt act. It literally was piles of material and equipment on the site, sitting in a state of suspended animation. I drive to work in the morning and go past a sawmill that closed in emergency. And I think the reason for this is if the economy went south, if World War II broke out, or whatever the reason, pandemic, gotta consider that. We do go to Supreme Court or Superior Court, I absolutely guarantee you that's going to be a consideration when we talk about grandfathering. This case, premature death of somebody and its intentions, and the state of the pandemic and all of the other things will come to play in this. Was Mr. Hastings' intention to abandon that pit? Yeah, I guarantee it. If he was sitting right here, he would tell you, absolutely not. And his heirs would say the same thing. Uh, and so we really looked at that, and that was the discussion we had. Now, I will grant you, it does say that there is in our, in our ordinance, this time period. But we look at it as, as it, somebody's actually said, I'm going to abandon it. I was talking about that sawmill earlier on. The sawmill basically went out of business because the lumber market collapsed. The sawmill sat there for a number of years. And I feel like if somebody come along and bought that, they could have started it back up, you know, with a switch, click. Sawmill starts spinning again. But as I drove by it this morning, they've actually pulled the equipment out of that sawmill. And it's all sitting there, getting loaded on to flatbed trailers, and it's going away. But I will tell you, this sawmill's 11. Their timeline or their clock has started because they made that overt, intentional, there's no disputing act to abandon sawmill. It's literally been abandoned because they removed the items, materials. Now, again, what I say is we can't have it both ways because technically the law is if they are done with the pit, they have 12 months to reclaim. That's the 155E standard too. So technically, if, if they had abandoned it, as you guys insist, we should have made them reclaim it right then there, but we didn't. So to me, that's another suggestion. They, they did not abandon. We cannot say you abandoned it, but we didn't make you reclaim it. So to me, again, the intention is absolutely there. In fact, I've talked to somebody that knew Mr. Hastings before he died. His intention was to, was to work out his retirement there, ploddering around in his pit. And it was his plan to basically go in there and get big boy in the sandbox in that pit and continue to bring material out. Uh, and I can assure you that the material in that pit is absolutely needed for all of us. And so, uh, a, a, a gravel pit is an absolute resource for the entire population of all of the towns. And it's very important. If we're going to really clamp down on it and kick them out, it's going to really come back on all of us. So uh, that's my ruling. And, and we said, send the minutes of the meeting, challenge it to the zoning board, absolutely. But we, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a time clock on that, and we absolutely said it in the last meeting, I know I did. That I ruled it was, it was still grandfathered in, and I remember saying it. And I think all these people sitting at this thing could testify that I said it was appealable, but nobody appealed it. And I would have, I was expecting an appeal there. Somebody could have come in and taken it to test.
Ordinance doesn't say it's a discuss intent, just the plain language of your ordinance. It says if it's not operated for a year, it's abandoned. There is no, there is no Lawler on top of that. And Lawler wouldn't apply here, right? You read his letter, right? You know the Interstate Court cases, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I talked to our attorney, Michael Courtney, my.
What's the response though? Did, what did the attorney, what did you come up with?
He basically listened to exactly what I just said to you. It said, you got a point. You got an absolute point, what you're saying. That there was no intention. I mean, again, it's that, it's that two-part test. We've always said that. I gave you the example last time. We had the marina on the lake that was there forever. Somebody bought the marina and they went and turned it into a single-family home. Later on, somebody else owned it and said, oh, I want to put the marina back there. What did we say? We said, sorry, you turned it into a single-family home. Don't have the rights for that previous use. You made that intentional act, and it's very clear.
Thank you.
Rob, can, can, can I focus in on something that you said?
Yes.
Which may, um, may make your decision a little bit more understandable. Um, you said at the time of Mr. Hastings' death, there were, what, dump trucks and what else on the property?
Say, there was a, what they call a yard truck that was used to move material around. And there's huge piles. I mean, there's excavated material.
Materials that he, that he paid taxes on.
And there's open holes. I mean, again, I just worry that we can't have it both ways. We can't say, well, we didn't make you reclaim it, but it's abandoned.
And you pay taxes on the statute.
What?
Didn't. But if, if you read the, the 155E interpretations on, on the internet, that's what Mr. Conkey may have. There's got to be some provision in there for, I mean, like I said, what if World War II had broken up, maybe, just throwing out an example. And all of a sudden, nobody needs gravel. We need, we need steel and, and rubber for our bullets and tanks. There's got to be some provision in there that think it kind of go into a suspended state of animation. The economy turns south, we have a global pandemic is another stimulating circumstance.
I mean,
There's got to be something there. We got to be.
I- i- if you take his death out of the equation.
Yep.
He didn't file the tax forms for some period of time before he passed away.
Yep.
But that equipment was still there.
Correct.
And to my mind, if I was abandoning a gravel pit for any kind of operation, and I had some equipment and I had material stockpiled and I had no need for it, I'm not going to hang on to it. I'm going to sell it. And I, I think the fact that before he died, the pit was dormant for whatever reason, whether it was market or competition or whatever.
He had.
I, I think that that is evidence in and of itself that he did not intend to abandon it, but he intended to resume operations at some point in the future because he kept all the equipment.
He was a golf course builder. That's what he did. And I think, and I think this is an area of all over the country, the golf course business had sort of gone south. Wasn't building golf course like he used to. He wanted building golf courses. And so, and, and as I said to our town council, if he had, like you say, removed the material, gotten rid of the dump trucks, cleaned up the site and planted it to grass, I'm having this discussion. It's totally intentional act. He's abandoned, just don't think.
A question for clarification. It's Tom Hannah again. Um, you've talked about the three tracks. Am I correct that you've just done away with track one? That because you have ruled, I'll put that in quotes, that there was no abandonment? That means there's no need for a special exception. Is that what you're saying?
That's what he's saying, yes.
Did you ever say that in, in a prior ruling?
This case?
In this case?
Yes, we said it during the meeting, but August 10th.
Yeah, we talked, we talked, we talked about it. We talked about the need to go to zoning, what, because it was abandoned or because it was not abandoned?
So a couple of points of information. My understanding is that no report was filed as required in 2015 and 2016.
That's correct.
My further understanding is that Mr. Hastings died in 2019.
Correct. I think the last one, was it Barry, the last one he filed, you found this, 2016.
2016. It was done for 17, 18, 19, or by his heirs in 20 or 21, in 2020.
So, just so there's no confusion about our position. Our position is that there has been no administrative ruling on this ca, in this case that, uh, would require an appeal within 30 days. It's all been part of your process. Uh, we not only will dispute the fact that that ruling has been made and the clock started ticking, but we all obviously dispute the the decision itself, if, if it was or your reasoning. And, uh, we appreciate that you've decided that it was a matter of regional impact and that you're going to have to start over because certain butters have not been yet identified.
Okay, push. Jim?
So, uh, the CBA had granted a variance for.
Special exception.
Special exception. Sorry, special exception for a gravel pit. And question came up 10, 15 years later, if it had been abandoned or not. Who would the question be asked or who would rule on it, make a ruling? But who would the appeal go to?
CBA.
To CBA. CBA hears appeals of administrative decisions, special exceptions, variances, few other minor things. So, uh, the parties and council here are going to probably appeal to the CBA.
Yeah, either the ordinance, either the end field, the end field has an ordinance sub down from, down a little bit lower from the one-year timeframe that says if there are, if there are two complementary, a state and a local, the more stringent one applies. The more stringent one is the one year. And in that one year language, there isn't a single thing about intent. It's just one year. And so.
Regardless of the, the details of the ordinance, the body that's going to rule on that is the CBA.
Right.
If there's an appeal filed.
Yeah, they, they get the first crack at it. And if, you know, the appellant is not satisfied with what the CBA says, then they can take it up to a court, Superior Judge decides, Superior.
Okay, so, um, just sort of recapping where we're at now, the planning board feels like that, that it's grandfathered.
From a zoning point of view.
A zoning point. It, it, it definitely needs a new excavation permit.
And we're, and we're treating the excavation permit as a new permit, not, not a permit for a grandfathered operation.
Okay.
Okay? And, and the new permit has the availability of more restrictions that we can impose.
Sure.
Okay. Hours of operation, for example.
Hours of operation, traffic, noise, whatever.
It seemed that we were getting to the point where, um, I'm wondering if the application is actually complete.
Why?
There's too many unanswered questions.
Well, I think we just solved that problem. It, it's, it's a regional, we have to start over. We voted that it's a regional issue. We're, we're going to be, it's, it's starting over.
Uh, I, I agree with you, but just the reason I'm saying this is that, um, I, I don't think, I think there's a number of things here that are going to come to play that basically is going to, the whole thing's going to get started over, right?
Yeah.
You're going to make your ruling within 30 days. You guys are going to appeal. I mean, that, that process is just going to happen. So, maybe we just need to wrap this up and.
I, I think bef, before we do, I, I think you, you raise a point about the application being complete or not being complete. And originally we had talked about, um, I thought a month ago, I thought that we were going to be talking about a reclamation plan and the pros and cons merits, et cetera. Um, on his application form on the checklist, Mr. Conkey indicated through checkmarks and a date that he would supply, among other things, final topography at a contour interval of five feet or less, final surface drainage pattern, including the location and physical characteristics of all artificial and or modified drainage facilities, a timetable as to reclamation, fully depleted sites within the project area, and a schedule of final reclamation activities, including seeding mixtures, cover vegetation, fertilizer types, and application rates. And I've been through the document that Mr. Conkey submitted. And I don't find any of that. So I, I think your point about the application being complete has merit. And, um, Mr. Conkey, if you supplied this information, I would love to see where it is in your plan. Um, if you haven't, I think you should take the time to develop the information, whether you can do it by yourself or you need to hire an engineer to do it for you. But, um, this is information that you indicated that you have supplied and it ain't there. I'm sorry. So, does the board feel at this point that the application is complete? Do we have?
Starting over?
Are we start, we will be starting over.
Rob will have to review another application then that meets the regional requirements. Yeah, is, is that for us to determine now? Or is it for Rob to determine with the new application?
It, it, it's for Rob to determine, but you know. Re, re, yeah, re, re, rather than, rather than receive the same documents that he submitted.
Yep.
And then say, we need more information because this is not complete. I'm, I'm bringing the, the discussion to the table now.
Yeah.
To give Mr. Conkey an opportunity of providing a plan that meets the town submission requirements and which he indicated on his application were included.
I think.
Which I can't find.
Yeah, I think that if Mr. Conkey were to read the online handbook on how to prepare, uh, that document, uh, it's not complete for sure. And perhaps, uh, Rob can share that information with him. It's, it's rather complex. There's a lot there.
It is.
It's a, there's a lot there and the new, um, plan that Mr. Conkey submitted was, was, uh, more detail than the last one, but not enough clue.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I agree.
So, um, maybe Rob can share that with him and, um.
Will I make a motion that the board declare the right? The application incomplete.
Do I hear a second?
Not a second.
Uh, motion has been made that the application as it exists on September 14, 2022 is not complete. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Could I make an observation?
We're, we're voting.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I think given all the hurdles that, that have to be overcome to, I, I, I think yet still this, this gravel kit, it can get to the point where it is in operation. We, as Rob, Rob pointed out, we, we need gravel pits in the, in the community. It's a vital resource, just as important as, as any other building material that's used in the Upper Valley. Housing costs are out of this, you know, unaffordable these days and, and gravel has to be brought in from further distances. It's only going to increase the cost of housing in the area. I do think that this gravel pit location is problematic, that the concerns of residents and that. But it's going to require a considerable amount of, of engineering details that, uh, which you talk, you're just going to have to provide. But I, I really think even with a more incomplete application that we're looking for, all of that information that is pulled for, pulled together for that is going to be used for the AOT anyways. It's not like it, it's, it's a something you have to do twice. I'm done.
Okay, um, we had taken affirmative votes. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Sorry, the application is not complete. And we will not act on a similar application when we start the rehearing. So, as, as Mr. Jennings said, there's a lot of stuff that you have to get together for the AOT permit. And I think you ought to take the time to do it. I don't think we should schedule a hearing until Mr. Conkey submits a complete application. Does that sound like a reasonable thing to say?
Yeah, well, yeah, if it's a new application, then also, we also have to, um, send out to all of butters, not just the ones we've sent already to.
Right, right.
We also have to send it to them.
Right.
Even though we've already sent it to them, they're going to have to get another one. We can take the vote later on because it has nothing to do with this administrative thing on fees. We have, look, we have a virtual hand raise.
Yep. Okay, who is, uh, who has their hand raised?
Christine Conroy.
Christine, you need to unmute your, yourself?
Um, I wanted, I wanted to ask whether Mr. Conkey can continue operations while this application process is going to be restarted.
No. Absolutely not, because he does not have a permit.
I think there's a distinction there though. Gravel pit operations, meaning excavation.
Right, right.
He can cut firewood and sawl lumber and all that.
Oh, he did. I mean, we're, we're not talking about cutting trees. We're talking about taking material out of the ground.
And selling stockpiled materials.
He can sell.
The stuff that's already been excavated and taxes have been paid, I think can be removed. I would advise him against it because those are holding his place in terms of the use. As I just indicated earlier, if he were to remove all the material that's out there, clean up the site, then he starts to get into that gray area that we're worried about with this, with this whole discussion. So, this might.
This is specific to the one site we are talking about because Mr. Conkey has another operation and we will not be telling him he cannot use his other operation because that is already.
Of course not.
Practice.
I just want to make sure that the audience understands that because we're not going to be going throwing gravel pits out the door just because one of them is having a moment with some paperwork.
No, we're only talking about excavation activities on map, map one lot 10. That's all we're talking about. If he wants to cut wood, if he wants to, I don't know, whatever, as long as it doesn't require a site man review, uh, he's more than welcome to use his land as he wishes. No problem there. But the minute he starts taking more material out of the ground, that's operating without a permit. That's a violation.
I think we should move on to our.
Go to the line if you guys are.
Okay, um, I think we should have a five-minute, uh, recess to allow the folks from Eastman to, uh, clear out. And we think, we thank you guys for coming and being patient with us.
Really appreciate the, the, your notice and the way you run it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
David, you're supposed to stay. They can hang out with us for the rest of the night.
Yeah. How many do you think would take us up on that, Kenny?
I feel like we should just keep offering until everyone wants to hang out with us all the time.
All right, folks, you're welcome to stay for the next year.
Whitney hangs out with us.
Is this, is this muted?
Whitney's supposed to hang out here.
I know. We appreciate it.
Same thing to. Making beater as we.
Nice to meet you.
I'm not there.
And if we can resolve the differences in round two.
Yeah. Hour two. It's where Eric played so well that I could, I'd say it's so hard to, I'm sorry. And then she said. I'm going to like, we're almost ready to eat in October and, uh.
Yes. Getting back to this.
Um, hey, Rob, can you hear us? Because I see no mic. Okay, there we go. I get a little nervous when I see no picture.
The microphone during the recess.
Listen, I want to be able to see you so I know I didn't get booted off the internet.
The recess. Yeah, we're just. Okay, the mic is back on. Kate, do you hear us?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but I feel really left out of the fun.
Yes.
Well, you could have come in person.
Yeah.
Um, do you really want me to hack all over you?
No.
Oh, you've used that.
Sure.
You've used that excuse too many times.
Tell the, ask the Attorney's General Office rep yesterday, who I had to like hustle away from because he had too much cologne, I think.
Uh, oh. Okay. All right, let's get to the hard part. P twenty-two dash, oh, have we started?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, P twenty-two dash oh-nine dash oh-one. Drew Hitchcock has applied for minor site plan review approval to operate a woodworking business, specialty lumberyard and property maintenance business, and a metal fabrication shop in multiple suites in the former roller rink location at one eighty U.S. Route four. Map fourteen lot forty-six. Property is currently owned by Hershey, Hershey Acres LLC of Enfield, and sits within the community business CB Thoming District. The parcel in question is three point nine two acres.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I am in a butter. So I would like to recuse myself.
Okay. Whitney, do you want to be a voting member on this now?
I would love to be.
Okay, Linda, would you take a seat? In the audience? Okay. So Linda has refused herself because she is in a butter. And, um, Whitney Banker, you are elevated to full board status, and you will be allowed to participate and to vote. So Drew, here we are again. And, uh, I want to remind everybody that the discussion we had in July was a conceptual discussion. Concepts change, they get modified. So anything that was said by us as a board or by Mr. Hitchcock as the applicant doesn't necessarily hold true today. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's point of order. I wanted to let everybody know that Mr. Hitchcock supplied me with a, with a letter, uh, basically signed by Mr. Tom Hershey, who's actually in attendance tonight, giving him, uh, granting him permission to negotiate. I'd like to have those for the file uh, because Tom Hershey still owns the building, and so he has permission.
Oh, okay.
Just a formality, just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of that.
Okay, good. Um, so Drew, tell us what your proposal consists of at this point.
Can we get a technical issue taken care of first?
Technical issue?
Yeah.
What's that? Rob, is the application complete?
I say yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairperson. Go ahead, Drew.
Um, my proposed use is my, primarily is my woodworking shop. We do custom kitchens, bathrooms, bookcases, et cetera. Um, this would occupy the center of the building. Alongside that, I'm proposing a, a new entity to myself, which is a lumberyard, but it goes similarly to, to my wood shop. I as well have a property maintenance business, and they'll occupy a small portion of this, basically as a maintenance for themselves. Um, the back portion, we had intended to put a metal shop in, and at this point, we don't believe that particular business is going to into this space. So there's no proposed use in that backspace at this time. Um, the timing of the way I would do things, the wood shop being the primary business, that's what we're going to work on immediately. Uh, the lumberyard space would kind of wouldn't be a lumberyard immediately. It would be more of our storage for moving our equipment into this. Um, and that would be next year at the, at the earliest before I put the lumberyard in, but it's, but it's a serious plan. Um, and then the back portion, I'm not going to, I'm not going to work on at this point because I'm going to concentrate on space. But the future, the idea would be to rent it to a tenant. Ideally, I'd have a tenant that is in a similar business as mine, some sort of maker space or craftsman or somewhat an engineering thing. But you have to find it right then. So, you know, that's, that's what I propose uses for the space. Um, in the yard, the parking lot, we have vehicles and trailers that go along with the businesses and equipment that would be stored when they're not in use. So I've kind of shown where we're proposing parking them. Kind of on the opposite side of the parking lot, and then in front of the building, cars would park out, you know, this, this big garage bay at the, at the front of the building now. Um, and that's where main access would be for for typing. And that's what people would drive up to and.
It's not put in storage, that's not building system.
But no, that's just parking area for my trailers. Are those things there, uh, if you go on the north side of the building?
Those are also trailers.
Those are trailers?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's another storage area.
Correct.
So your, your only access that is larger than a man door would be the existing garage door on the north side.
At this point, um, I'm interested in putting some garage base and more, uh, van doors on the front side, the long.
The parking lot side.
Parking lot. But supply chain and labor issues have pushed that back quite a bit.
You also got to do some grading there, right? To get in those doors?
If you were to drive a vehicle in, but there is right now, there's a roadway that goes down the front of the building. So you can, you can access a fork up, you can access a delivery truck to it. Um, but if you were going to drive a vehicle straight up there.
Straight up.
You don't.
Yeah. I would, I would add, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Hitchcock has been in contact with our building inspector for consults in obviously any outfit that he does to this building would be under supervision of a building permit and inspection by our building inspectors.
That goes without saying.
He's already had some input, at, at least on fire escape and, and where things need to be, um, from a safety standpoint.
You've been able to get away from having to have top water, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a well on site?
There's a well on site, correct.
Yeah, I think the basic concern was sprinkler, being sprinkler, and, uh, the building inspector, from my understanding, has determined that your operation is small enough that it doesn't, that the entire building doesn't need to be sprinkled.
That's correct.
So that kind of helps you a lot.
Probably it's your sanding area, right?
Yes.
You, what do you mean, use dry chemical?
Yeah, I don't need to put them in, but I'm where I'm proposing my dust collection system.
Right.
If there was to be a fire, more than likely it's going to be there. And I'm proposing putting it in. It's not required, but I, I would like.
Put in a dry chemical.
Correct, for my own safety and.
Yeah, sure. Great idea, absolutely.
On top of that, I've considered a, um, similar to a smoke detector system, but a heat sensor system. A smoke detector wouldn't work in a wood shop, but a heat sensor would. And that would give me the protection of a weekend or a night that someone's not physically there, would be hardwired to the fire department.
Okay.
And that's, I'm exploring those options right now. Electrician.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about your operation, number of people that will be employed, number of customers?
Uh, currently I employ three people for the property maintenance. They don't actually work on site. They, they, you know, they, they could go and drive somewhere else, so they're not on site all the time. Um, I have three employees in the, as well as myself, in the wood shop. Um, this amount of space would allow me to expand a little bit. Again, I need to be able to find the people, but if someone's out there, I think we can probably double our, our force of maybe six or seven people. Um, the lumberyard would probably require a minimum of three people. And one of those could be an office personnel that's kind of combined with the, with the wood shop because it's all kind of the same thing. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking probably in the ten to twelve, possibly fifteen, for our operations. And again, that's if you can find them, but.
Yeah.
We have, we have great hopes.
Yeah. My question went more to, uh, the adequacy of, of parking for employees. And, uh, you know, with a number of fifteen or so, uh, from my personal knowledge of that parking lot, uh, even with your equipment stored at the east side of it, um, I suspect you would not fill more than a quarter of it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that space traditionally, as the roller rink, had hundreds of people in and out.
Yeah.
We would be nowhere near that, even including the stuff that's sitting idle. Um, so I, I think as far as parking lot square footage, we're.
And the lot's bigger now than it was then.
And in terms of I'll call it retail traffic, people coming in and out, visitors, uh, what would you anticipate as a maximum?
So the lumberyard would be where the retail really would happen. Our wood shop will see someone once in a while, and that's that. Because we will build the stuff and we ship it to their, to their house. We rarely have traffic. The lumberyard would see the traffic, but it's not like a Home Depot or La Valles. We're selling hardwood, lumber and plywood and hardware that goes along with cabinets and more specialty things. So you're not running in to grab a gallon of paint, when you're not running in to grab, you know, two by four. Um, so it's, it's a far less, I mean, I would, I would guess on the high end, you might see twenty-five customers on a daily basis. Some days less, some days more. But it's, it's a low volume.
Okay, and your hours of operation?
The wood shop right now, seven to three thirty. That's going to be fairly standard. Lumberyard, we might, um, go to like four or five o'clock, start things at seven o'clock. It's, it's daytime hours.
Right. Okay, um, one of the criteria that we need to review is access for fire school. I don't know why schools in there, police and medical emergency vehicles. The, the number of man doors that you're going to have initially across the front is what?
Uh, there's two double doors on the front right now and two, uh, excuse me, one on the back. And then there's the garage bay at the end.
So will, will there be access to each of the suites from the, from the outside, or?
Um, I guess I would consider this back suite, meaning what this labeled as metal shop, as one suite. And then the front portion, which is wood shop and lumberyard, as, as a additional suite. And the answer is yes, there's, there's a door on each end. The back one would go into the metal shop, the front one would be the.
Imagine if building inspector, we, we get to start to look at the egress issues, have been extra doors required, it's.
He has brought that up, a, in the, the back portion. Um, there's not a second door
Yeah.
right now. There is in the front one.
Yeah.
But along with that, if I'm not occupying that as, as a separate business, then that egress, because this would all technically be one business, um, that egress is, we have it on both hats now.
But if you get a tenant at some point, he would tell you.
Correct.
You need another door.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, he's he's going to issue you your certificate of occupancy or not, and, uh, I think we'll, we'll trust our total enforcement officer to to guide you in whatever is necessary. Is there a need for ADA handicap access to your facility?
There will be when we have the lumberyard, because there's technically a sales front. Uh, and so that double door that's currently there, it's going to be a new door, but it's going to be in the same space. That will count. We'll have to put a doorbell. And that's, that's, um, for that reason.
Okay. Uh, let's see, what else do we have to do? All this highway stuff is basically grandfathered and state controls it anyhow. Uh, water drainage. Any comments or plans to change the existing drainage?
At this point, no, it's all been cleaned out and operating fine. I, I ended up going there in a torrential rainstorm and took pictures of how it works. Um, and there's basically a drainage ditch that runs the entire perimeter that's lined with, with drainage stone. And it, uh, it does its job. It catches the, catches the water coming off, up above as well as any rainwater that come out the building, parking lots.
Question from Linda?
Comments?
Go ahead. Can you speak up, Linda, to the air conditioner just?
Right. I I want to talk about the drainage that is behind the building because, uh, I'm really glad you're here. I don't think I've ever met you.
I met you, my mother wanted to have a kiss of you.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Linda, could you refer to north, south, east, west rather than back?
Okay. Uh, the the, uh, west side of the building, um, there is a drainage ditch which runs down there and a little catch pool. And then the solution to the water in the catch pool was to divert it over onto my land. And so when that water runs down, not off the roof and runs down there, it goes over into my field. And the stone wall has had the stones pushed aside so that it, it makes that work. And that's kind of not okay with me. So, um, I have some suggestions for you. Uh, let me first say that the way it used to work was catching water off roof four to the catch basin. And Peter Martin had a system of a diagonal, um, underground pipe that went across the lot over to behind where the piles of dirt are behind on the other land. And diagonally into the brook. It never ran down the back. Uh, part of the problem with it running down the west side of the building is that if it didn't go on my land, it would go into the cemetery in about twenty feet. Um, and that's not a lot. So I have some suggestions about how this can be cured because I don't see at this point how you're going to get the water to the other side of the property. We'd be happy to let you bury a pipe down with the brook or something. Take that water down. Um we'd be happy to let you bury a pipe down with the brook or something, take that water down.
But I have I have my own comment.
Yeah.
So on the backside of that property, what you're talking about, the much your property. That's the water is always running down. And it's like this lower to me behind the, so there's pavement, then the water hits the pavement, then it runs on. And then it runs into that stone. I have pictures of that floor. And bring it down, and then there were some questions we needed to work there. Being able to jump from town that came up and looked at the looked at the project. Said, yeah, that statue, nobody went out on your property. There's that stone that goes down, and then I now made that sediment pond. Burn it up with the soap that's behind it because that's I didn't want it to go. Just let it dissipate out, dug that down, put sand in it, put the stone on top so that any sediment or any water would dissipate out through the ground there. So I don't, I understand what you're saying. If you went down there and looked at it, you'd say, yeah, we've got heavy rain. This is gonna go way over there. But I watched it. That water comes down. Because a lot of water comes off of the roof four. And comes down, and that water sets in that sediment pond. And because it's burned, so it's burned up here with some clay material. Dump excavating ground down.
Yeah.
Put a nice sand in there like a septic seat, went to the water into the ground.
I took pictures last spring and it was just running like a brook right over into my field. So.
They did they did a spread.
I I. I just think it could be improved.
Oh, would you like to see that? Or suggest?
Diverting the water down to the brook.
There's the brook.
Downhill about.
So was you talking about on my other property?
No, no.
What property?
Uh there is an unnamed brook that.
A lot that runs across my property. Low growth.
Those two are all growth.
Yeah.
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 I believe it's unnamed. It runs all year. Uh it's it's what.
It runs all year.
I have no idea.
Yeah, because it goes underneath Oak Grove Cemetery. It comes in at Oak Grove, goes under Oak Grove.
Yeah.
Never um basically, it's it's a culvert coming off Route four, is what it is.
We wanna be really careful.
No, it doesn't. It never did in the summer.
Yeah, we wanna be really careful about making any recommendations about diverting groundwater because that falls to DES. And it is illegal to change the flow of groundwater, as we all know. So DES, I mean, not that I'm not saying that the state doesn't make mistakes when they're doing road beds all the time. Um and change it, but uh that's a DES subject, so. We we as a group should stay away from that.
Yeah, there's that's a good idea. It's a it's a catch basin on Route four that basically leads to that. There's also water coming off of, well, where the tank is, where the pump tank is.
But that that water isn't what's coming onto my land. It's it's what's coming directly down from Route four B on the west side of the building.
Okay.
And um.
And you're saying the. The upgrades to the drainage that was done a couple of years ago.
When was it? When did we buy that, Rob?
Anyway, that that.
It's a.
Made it worse. Or or different.
Well. It made it different.
Maybe.
Because Peter Martin had a different system in place, although his driveway was pretty impossible. So I'm really impressed with what you did with that driveway. I didn't think it was possible. Um but um. I would like to work on some solution to not having so much water come into that field.
Okay.
Okay, is that it, Linda?
Uh, yes.
Um.
I, well, I'd like to ask that that approval be contingent on. Improving the drainage that comes onto my property.
Okay, thank you, and we will take that under discussion. Uh. Water supply is onsite well.
Correct.
Am I correct? And sewage disposal. On site?
On site, something.
And do we have any idea what condition the septic is in at this point?
Um rating.
Yeah, so is mine.
Yeah, and that's.
Barely.
Well, I hope this one isn't barely, but.
Yeah.
Um so the sys- the system that's there is. Way oversized for for our use, um because it was designed racially for, like I said, hundreds of hundreds of.
Uh huh.
People um in the building at one time and where we're having.
Yeah.
Ten to fifteen.
Uh how do you, how did you come by that information?
Well, I guess we have. Um Thomas has a a design on the the original design from the um when it was put in.
Okay.
Um and so I believe there's two fifteen hundred gallon tanks and two liter.
I don't have, I don't think that I have a design, to be truth be honest with you. I know that when Pete, when I bought it from Peter. Peter said that there was two hundred, you could, it would take two hundred eighty five people. There was a previous person from town that was gonna put a bingo hall in there. The gentleman from the planning, from the uh building department came down, the building was all set, the septic could take that many people because it had a uh. At it was a roller skate rink at one time. It took a lot of. Uh waste that went down. We were there working. I had guys that were in there going to the bathroom. We ran the water, did all that. We never had one time that it didn't flush back up. Or any way, shape or form. And I didn't see any water puddling out like pooling up out of the ground from the septic system or anything like that, so.
You but you never had a pump in this thing.
Yeah.
Let's just say that it's an old undocumented system and uh it works. It it it's currently in working shape, and you believe it to be sized.
Yes.
Way in excess of what half or fourteen or twenty people. Using it as, you know, in a business as opposed to a residential situation. I'm I'm good with that. Um I don't think snow removal is gonna be an issue because you. Got a lot of place you can put it. Uh we talked about ADA. Uh solid waste and recycling. I I read somewhere in your narrative that you were gonna put dumpsters and screen them, but I don't know where those are gonna go.
Um I believe I had a drawing that I thought went with the. Application, but es- essentially, I'm I'm thinking the east side of the building would be the easiest.
So uh.
Parking lot side.
Parking side of the building, essentially centered. Right now, we just have one single. I don't know that we have a need for recycling, but if we could do a toter or something, so smaller things, we do have some cardboard.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're we're thinking something along the line of just events that.
And and that will be screened from public view.
Correct.
Okay. Uh. Let's see, have, do you have a letter from police and fire departments saying that they've reviewed this plan?
Uh we actually, as a matter of course, share all the applications with them. I don't have any, I don't have any feedback.
Uh can you get them to do a file memo, Rob, sort of, and uh? If there are any issues. Maybe we may make that a contingency, that there be no issues from police and fire departments and from. Uh. See what else we have to talk about. I think that's it. Any questions from board members?
Well, um. Just looking to the to the future and hopefully you're you're, we all want your building, your business to be successful and you get full tenants in there and so forth. Hmm. Um and at some point. The parking requirements, trucks going in and out, whatever, may may prompt you to wanna. Alter the parking lot, maybe bring it up to the level of the. Entryway, at least portion of it. And I I don't know that we can make that a requirement or anything, but um. Because of the issues of the water drainage, it's not something that that one should just. Willingly go out and start doing. This is a pretty large parking lot, so at that point. Um I don't know if, does that kick off another site plan review?
Uh.
If it was substantial enough.
I I think, you know, if there's substantial uh movement of earth. Then that kicks off another review. Uh is it ours or Liam's? You know?
Yeah, I would say expansion of the use would probably be something that we would consider as a site plan, a revised site plan, but I would say. Excavation outside, I mean, no, you can do that as a matter of course, I think for a business. Adding garage doors or that kind of stuff. Well, I I'm just thinking, you got. I don't, you probably got a good acre and a half parking lot out there. What is it? Who knows? But it's a large parking lot, and if. If a lot of that needed to be altered in a significant way. We might be. We might wanna see a a site plan review on that.
I think the state has it. Like X amount of yards, and if you're moving X amount of yards, you need to.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that's what I was getting at. I just forgot that it was the state.
Yeah, exactly, alteration of terrain. Hundred thousand square feet, right? That the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that you'd reach that threshold because you get um. Yeah, we didn't, we had a lot of calls when Tom did a lot of the cleanup. We didn't require an alteration of terrain.
Make it a thousand feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got about a hundred and seventy thousand square feet and four acres or so. You know, you you probably won't reach that threshold.
I don't think so. Unless he, you know, does another building or whatever, but at that point, it would.
All the, all all I'm saying is just a caution for the future. If if you should need to do that, then. Would probably be a good idea to talk to, talk to Rob and just make sure that things are good.
Okay. Anybody else? Somebody want to make a motion? Go.
I make a motion that we, well, what are the words to use? That we accept the broad?
Uh that we approve the site plan as presented with the following conditions.
I thought about that, so.
Uh the they can, the only condition that we've talked about would be. The uh the drainage issue that Linda has brought up, and we can make that a condition, or we can say. This is a matter between landowners and let them settle it by themselves without.
Well, it.
Without the board inter intervening, and I I think that might be the more appropriate way.
I agree.
I think that it's a a state matter. If you have a drainage issue and you're casting inappropriately, especially new water. Onto a parcel, that's a DES issue.
I don't know that it is necessarily new.
I I'm not saying you're doing it. I'm saying I just, I don't think that's our board.
Coming off the present.
No conditions?
Uh. I I don't know how that would work practically, you know, unsatisfactory resolution of the Jones drainage issue, but. What would that?
I mean, can you say what you're looking to? You know, do you have a? What would be satisfactory to you? What do you?
Ly- Linda, go ahead.
In the water that's going over the stone wall and taking it down to the brook. If you follow the um stone wall down, you you come to the brook.
I think part of the issue of that, if you're asking him to put an underground drain that's going across someone else's land.
It's going across my one.
It's not even that, though. You can't put groundwater into a brook and divert it to it. There's very specific requirements. Um it and it's very, very serious. That's why I don't think this board should be making that direction. DES. Is very, very clear about what they allow to go into watersheds and where and how it travels and at what speed and, you know, there are sediment rules and. Uh I I am not an expert. I know, for example, I was subject to a flood in which things were not done correctly, and it is. All something that would have to go through DES eventually, the the folks who did it wrong.
I guess what my response to you would be would would be, I'm I'm happy to meet you there. Um whether it's in a rainstorm or just a dry day, and we can look at what. Where the water's being diverted.
I wanna tell you I'm just a hundred percent for what you're doing. I I think it's a perfect use for the property. I'm very impressed with how you improved it. It didn't seem possible. But enough dirt needed, isn't it? Um but. I mean, this water has a choice of going into the cemetery or. Through my stone wall.
But if I'm catching the water, I didn't put any more water on the property than what was falling there twenty years ago. The building, there were buildings that were there.
That's true, but what's coming down all the way from Route four in that ditch, runoff dish ditch. That water can't get to the other side of the property.
Why would I wanna have the prop, go across the property? And the other thing is there's piper, there's pipes that go underground into your field that I didn't even disturb because I stayed a long ways away from the stone wall. Then you can see that Peter said, and this is what Peter told me, so I have no idea. I'm not here to debate it. I'm more than happy to go over there to meet with you to see if we can come to some sort of an agreement. I have no problem with that, but he said that there was pipes because they all have trunk pipes. That are in that hole in that bank there. You can see they're still there unless somebody took them out in the last two days. That came from that field over there. Now, that's what Peter told. I have no idea if that's true or not.
The state put that ca- catch basin in, and they moved it there. That this uh the state put them.
But in talking about from your field, from your field to the to this property. Nothing to do with the state.
I think if we all get together.
Yeah, I I I I think this, this is this is beyond beyond the purview of of the site plan review.
Correct.
Um you know, clearly, there there's a problem. That needs to be addressed and.
I'll talk to them after the.
Okay, okay, and or the state and.
So we have a motion on the table.
Do you want to restate the motion, Tim?
Oh, I I move that we approve the uh site plan as as presented um.
I'll second.
With no condition.
Okay, the motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Extentions. Welcome to town.
Um could we do this?
And I re, yes.
Um could we just have Rob give all of the parties the information for New Hampshire DOT, the folks out um. Over by Whaleback because those are the folks who are responsible for that section of road so that they have them as a tool in their tool belts? Just in interest of being useful.
Okay, uh Rob is out of the room. I don't know if you can see that, but when he comes back, we will convey that.
Can I write, can I write him an email?
Here he is.
Here he is.
Look, I'm get homework.
Rob, Rob, there there is uh someone out in the ether that wishes to speak with you.
Rob.
Yes.
In the interest of being helpful, since we're a planning and a service organization, and I know you'll do this, could you give all of the parties, um you know, concern about the water? Information on who to talk to at um New Hampshire DOT out by Whaleback. I think it's Doug King and his friends.
Yes.
That one. Um that would be great. I just want them to have that as a tool in their tool belt, and I figured you could pass it on.
Yep.
Kate, I've talked to them in the spring, and they have more important things to do than.
They. They have always got more important things to do. Uh they have also never designed an intersection that is wrong. So they can hop on it. So they can pop on it.
Aye.
You're good.
Okay, Drew, you're good to go. And uh.
Yeah, it'll get you, uh, David and I will prepare a decision based on this vote that we'll get in coffee eventually.
Yes, and to the rest of the board.
And when you get the lumberyard in, I'll be your first customer.
That's our real receiver.
There's a place in Norfolk, Virginia that imports lumber from all over the world.
Yep.
They have purple, purple wood.
It's a purple.
And, and.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
South America?
It's a dyed with gray. It's some, I don't know where it comes from. They got black wood, they got purple wood.
All right, folks.
Come on.
Let's go.
Order, order, conceptuals, none. Uh. We have two sets of minutes that we need to approve.
The uh, August tenth minutes you went through, right? That was the one that we were waiting for that you went through with a bunch of graphical stuff.
That was the one that had all kinds of funky errors.
I read it at length. I did not find any errors that I caught.
The funk is taken out. Funk is gone.
That's my.
I think the motion we approved the minutes of August the tenth.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor of approving the August ten minutes.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
We've all read those more than once.
Minutes are approved as submitted. Next item, minutes of August twenty-four.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of August twenty-fourth.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of approving the minutes of August twenty-fourth as submitted, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Um. Let's see, update on master planning task force. We met on Monday of this week for the first time in a few months. We are back on track. Um, we're definitely behind schedule, but uh, we hope to have. Uh, our final public hearing before the planning board, public hearing before Thanksgiving. That's maybe aspirational, but that's our target. I hope we're gonna make it.
Depends on Ms. Brandy.
Right.
Right, yeah, let's blame it on the salt.
Well, that and we need the latest version if we can all look at it, right?
Yeah. Um. You guys all got the current latest version of the plan. And that's just informational for your review only, and I think you also got the proposed mailer. So that's about it. Um.
Aren't we on the mailer?
What?
The mailer?
Comment on the mailer?
Um. Did everyone read it and it made sense? So that I just. I'm very visual and like when I look at something, you know, there are always the things that pop that catch your eye. And I tried reading it and it didn't necessarily follow. Not trying to be a jerk, but I just was like. Um. I don't know, on the mailer. It was a little tougher. Um. Language? This was um. Where was the mailer? Hang on, I'm trying to. Look at me, I'm going through my million attachments, hang on. This is not good. Um.
Want to send a markup copy?
I was like, where, this, is it in the multiple document one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where it is. Okay, yeah, when I looked, okay. Is this your plan? And I'm like, when I read, is this your plan? I'm like, no, right? Like that's, that's what catches my eye first and it's like your plan, your voice and I. So I immediately, because I didn't, that's what catches your eye first. So it's kind of like, what is this about? I realize you could read the rest of it. But with all the political mailers out there that are so weird and so funky, then do you really want someone to answer a question? On their own without reading, right? Like that was kind of my mental block. I got to there and I was like. No, I don't think it is. And I was like, oh no, wait, it is. I, and so I want to be really candid and honest with you because. Like technically I need to have ownership, right? You guys need, so when you read this page, I want you to look at it and say to yourself, like, what caught your eye first? And like, did you really have to think on it or is it something like, and do you think the average human who has zero point zero interest in town because? Let's be honest, a lot of people who get mail, they are lucky they know we exist. Um, will they be able to read this as a regular human? Especially with.
That's the DRI, that's not the thing we're talking about.
Oh, what are you talking about?
Master plan.
There's a mailer that's going out and I don't typically, it's like, I just, we're spent, mailers are very, very expensive. They're like fifteen hundred dollars to send to end fields, a car that size. Right? So you really want to nail it.
Um, it's basically, it's an invitation to everybody to read. The draft plan and come and make your comments because this is the end of the process for these first five chapters. And we want to make sure that everybody knows about it. And that way, but when it gets to the planning board, which is the official acceptance place. Um, we don't have a whole slew of people coming and saying, but I didn't know about it. I didn't read it. Um, I don't like it.
If you want it to be about the master plan, then the master plan should be some of the biggest letters, right? At some point. In that like, is this your master plan, right? I guess that's where I'm at, right?
Okay.
I'm not trying to be a jerk, but like the thing, the, the main topic is like your plan, your voice and you're like, no, not my. If you're just like an average, because I'm like flipping through stuff real quick in life, if I saw your plan, your voice, I'd be like. Nope, another delusional, right? Because I'm talking about how many political mailers has everybody gotten recently? Like I use them to scoop up dog poop. Um, so.
Okay.
You don't want. Yeah.
Kate, the, the flip side is going to be the cover of the master plan, which I. I think very, I presume it's going to say on it, end field master plan. And then it's going to have draft as a watermark on it.
I mean, if that's the case, that's a little more obvious, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, like I said, I just, I worry when you spend a ton of money on a mailer, you really want every penny out of it because mailers are super effective, super effective.
Okay, I, I think the idea of adding the word master to the thing is a great suggestion. And I will get it done.
I love it.
Okay. Um. Any old business? I don't think so. Any new business?
Two quick things. Um. The Zoom meeting. Is there any way for teams, is there any way that we could? Ask the participants, other than the person who's speaking, to turn their video on? It's distracting.
You don't like seeing them put their fingers in your nose?
You don't like looking at Kate?
Uh, well, when Kate's talking, yes, we, we want to see Kate, but um. I looked at the Zoom or the video of the meeting of the conference hearing and. It was really awful to look at because you're just looking at four or five faces and I know in Zoom, a, the speaker pops up. You can set it up.
Probably a setting on Teams as well.
It is a setting on Teams. Rob is, I, I mean, sorry, not Rob, Brad is correct. Rob is able to control that. Um, the owl is a type of split screen, so the owl dominates. Yeah. And I think the other thing is you have the option to feature something and would be very smart to feature our own screen. Um, so that's an option. So you can play around with a little bit. The other thing is you need to be cognizant. I don't know what size screen you're viewing on, so I have four screens right here. Um, so I have a large laptop and all the way up to television is big as the one you guys are seeing me on now. Um, so.
I don't think four is enough. Kate, I think you need to add a couple. It's, board seems like.
What am I going to do if I, I mean, this is my engineering diary, I'm sorry, see? Um, so, but I'm saying, I'm saying like, so if you're looking at a phone, it's terrible. A laptop. Uh-oh, I think I froze.
No.
No, you're good.
A laptop isn't awesome. Um, like twenty-six inch screen or two is pretty sweet. Uh, but I, I think it's a fair ask and I think you can play around with it. I've used. Teams for years, but never with the owl and it is specifically the owl that starts making people kind of little. So. And I'm not down on the owl at all.
The, the owl overrules the team settings?
Yeah.
So um, while you guys were chatting away, I did this thing called spotlight. Earlier because I wanted it to be bigger and I could click spotlight for all because I'm a member of the town organization. So I can actually control what you see. So I think if you look at tonight, partway in, you'll see the view changes. So the view on your end, right in the meeting might not change because you're viewing Rob's screen, which is the portal. He's not casting because you can, Rob could be cast, he's duplicating a screen versus casting. So if he was casting, you'd be seeing what I see. So I suspect. Just take a peek once it's up. Rob maybe can tell you what he sees. I just snuck in and did it on my own until you guys. Never let Kate alone by herself.
I'd like to see people who, when people on teams talk, I would like to have, to see them.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, that's what Kate is, is asking.
But we don't, we don't want to see the, if they don't recognize to talk.
You want to swap chairs with me? That solves your problem.
No, no, it won't.
Yes.
You're gonna go. And I don't know, see.
You, you wouldn't, you're, stop looking at it. No, that's.
I only like that one. Puts us on like uh.
Okay, all right. Um, what's, all right, hey, let's get back to the meeting, folks. It's twenty after nine. Um, our next meeting is September twenty eighth. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim.
Real quick, real quick.
You have two things.
And we're not going to have another, another hearing until we've.
Got the complete.
Automatically checked the regional impact requirement, right?
We got, we're gonna get.
This day forward.
Yeah.
It's going to be number two on the.
Right.
Application complete, yes or no, regional impact.
I think this was an unusual case.
This is, I mean, you know, who would have thought that there was an aquifer underneath that might have regional impact?
Right, and or is, is it really there and if so, exactly where?
Right, right, yeah, well, but I mean.
Right, what direction is it?
Right, and if, if each of it is getting all of their water from one well that they use and process, is it, is that well anywhere near the aquifer?
Right.
We don't know anything.
We don't know anything.
You had a minor subdivision that you guys, we all looked at um, on the Kizer property, right? That bordered Grafton. And that was a gravel pit that was kind of a hot mess, right? And so we've had ones that border that you could call it, I mean. We don't know, it falls into that, we don't know, it borders another town, doesn't have an impact.
I just think it should be a check on the form.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not a problem.
Ask the question, Rob makes the judgment.
Yep, right.
I like it.
And if he's wrong, somebody can appeal to the ZVA.
Right, and.
But they, they will know that when they file the application.
Yes.
Because Rob will tell them.
Yep.
Is that form an administrative document that requires approval or can it be changed by Rob?
I think that could be changed by Rob, yeah. It's a checklist.
Excellent, I like it. My favorite.
Okay, uh, our next meeting is September twenty-eighth, two weeks from tonight. Um, the only thing that I'm aware of is a conceptual for, how many units is it, Rob? Hundred and fifty housing units.
Where?
My pond.
My pond. No, 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 this is the Iron Man properties.
Apes.
Oh, the Kipper Brothers are back.
Yeah, yeah.
The Kipper Brothers.
Linda wins the prize.
Another, another butter for.
Another recusal.
I was gonna say, Linda runs a retirement plan.
What else is on the agenda for that night? I know. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna start talking. Possible changes for. I mean. That we can implement. We got to talk about, Rob.
Those are the two big ones.
Those are the two big ones. And that'll probably take most of the two hours. That's all we got.
Okay, I move adjourned.
Second.
Yep, motion mode, motion.
See, we're losing it.
Uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Folks, you guys did a great job.
So did you, so did Rob.
Um.
Hi, Kate.
This is probably one of the most difficult um, from a legal perspective. Hearings that I have been involved in, in my twenty odd years of being on the land use board.
This is bad as it gets.
This is, the last one that was this bad was Iron Man.
And I wasn't here, I wasn't here for that.
And we're coming around to it again.
Where's Iron Man?
Where's the location of that?
That's.
Right behind you.
Right next to Linda.
Where they took all the trees out?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
Oh, yeah, it's basically.
They, they were purchased trees there for like a month.
It's behind which Dankums was.
Right, yeah.
That whole field up there.
It goes through the water tower up over following my property line.
And comes out on Maple Street.
Wow.
And they were supposed, Iron Man was supposed to use Maple Street as their entrance and exit. And of course, Maple Street didn't like that. But um, uh, these other guys. I'm surprised it's only a hundred and some units because the last one they brought to me was. Three hundred and some in eight big apartment buildings, was going to be parking underneath, but then.
Seventy acres.
Seventy-seven times seven acres. And that's, that's actually something that they'll actually be talking to you guys about is that seventy-seven times two. Because the half an acre per uh, yeah, per unit.
Yeah.
Is where we get to a hundred and fifty-four.
Right.
They would love to talk to you about more density.
Yep.
Um. Just as a quick um, aside, if we could be very careful when we're addressing people like lawyers. I know everyone did an awesome job, um, and we all did the best we can, but they, that lawyer was clearly taking notes on y'all. And so I, I want you to just, I'll be very cognizant of the fact that they have our number. And we're going to be careful, right? Because I, I, I can see the writing on the wall and um, I did get a note on that um. To take a look at the lawyer and I did watch him very carefully because I, you guys are talking and you have humans there, but I could really see him on the screen. I guess that's what I'm saying to you.
He was taking notes the entire meeting.
Oh, yeah.
No, I know, and I just, I think we're trying sometimes, um, instead of arguing with a lawyer who thinks he's in a courtroom trying a trial, we have to economize our words a little bit. And it's not a criticism of you guys. I just, I think this is going to come back.
Oh, no, this is definitely going to come back.
It's, it's going to be coming back for another year.
Yep, yep, yep. And I think you guys did awesome. I just think, um, yeah, I can see. Entertainment for a full year, you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Shut it down, all right. See you guys in two weeks. Shut it down. All right. See you guys in two weeks.